Can everyone see the screen okay? The agenda.
We are live.
Okay, great. Okay, so thanks again. Michael Dever here is Chair of the County Planning Commission. Thanks for joining us today for our June 10, 2021 meeting. At first, I'd like to read this important notice. This meeting is being conducted remotely in accordance with the State of Ohio House Bill 180 or 197. Interested persons may access this meeting via livestream by using the following link. Public comment for this meeting may be substituted in writing, but no later than 1:00 PM on Thursday, June 10. So at 1:00 today, be emailed to the following address at planning@CuyahogaCounty.us. And with that being said, I will call the meeting to order and can we do a roll call in it? You're muted, Annette.
Sorry about that. Mayor Boers.
Here.
Mayor Brennan. Councilperson Brown.
Here.
Mayor Warren.
Here.
Director Collier.
Present.
Director Dever.
Here.
Mayor De Seco.
Here.
Mayor Gemella. I believe he's calling in.
Correct, he'll be calling in.
Here.
Mayor Sellers.
Here.
Councilperson.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. As many of you should know, we've advanced an item, or at least are requesting to put an item on the agenda that we'll cover under new business. At the same time now, I'd like to, the approval of the minutes for April 8, 2021 is, can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Sure, moved by Simon.
Seconded by Collier.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions or discussion on the minutes of April 8? Hearing none, can I have a voice vote of aye?
Aye.
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 Any ayes? That motion carries. Thank you. If we could, we'll go to the next item on the agenda, the resolutions. Annette?
Sorry.
First resolution is 210610A. It's an OPWC cost agreement with DOTWIC.
Thank you. Mary?
Yes, so before we got to the resolutions today, we were going to provide a couple of updates. And so we've got Michael Mears from our team to provide an update on the Solon Connects project. So we're going to let him do that and then we'll move towards the resolutions meeting approval today and get an update from Allison Ball and our team as well. So I will stop sharing and let Michael, you can do your presentation.
Michael?
Okay, thank you. Mary, can everybody see that okay? Thumbs up from anyone? Okay, great. Well, thanks, Mary, and thanks everyone for letting me share this stuff. Our team here at County Planning is really grateful for the opportunity to develop the Solon Connects Plan and work with the great partners at the City of Solon. And we're excited to share some of that work with you today. I'll try to keep it brief. In 2019, the City of Solon was awarded Planning Services for its Solon Connects application, a project aimed at improving bike and pedestrian connectivity in the community. The vision and the intent of the Solon Connects Plan is really simple. It's built safer and stronger pedestrian bicycle connections and create accessible and beneficial active transportation options for everyone in the city. And really, the everyone part is pretty critical. We want to make sure that recommendations not only work for the residents of Solon, but also for the numerous employees and visitors that commute to the Solon daily via car or by bus. So why connectivity or why does Solon need a connectivity plan? One, we know that residents support it in previous surveys. Respondents said that it was important that Solon focus on being a bike and pedestrian friendly community and that if the city added sidewalks or trails, people would walk or bike more to reach the destinations. And then, you know, in addition to demand from residents, we also have the data and research that shows increasing connectivity is good policy because of the numerous benefits it creates. Mobility improvements can increase health outcomes, safety outcomes, improve economic activity, and really help combat climate change. And we know many of the positive results we want to see in our community are related to improvements in transportation and mobility. And second, we know that there are people who would like to get out and bike more, but choose not to ride because the existing facilities available to them are really too stressful and don't make them feel comfortable enough to go out and ride. I won't bore you with all the details, but through research and surveys, we know that about 51, and this is nationwide, we know that about 51% of people, including adults, beginners, and children, fall into what many call the interested but concerned group of cyclists. And this target group is really whom the Solon Connects Plan aims to build a network for. And we also know the type of network to build to increase that group's comfort level. Low-stress facilities like protected bike lanes, multi-use trails, and locations that primarily provide physical separation between bikes and traffic. Unfortunately, many of the projects we build today and many of the projects that exist in Solon, like bike lanes on a 35 mile per hour road, don't really provide the necessary infrastructure to make people comfortable and safe. So really, what we're trying to do is build more of those all ages and abilities facilities and give people a safe and comfortable way to reach destinations. Our process here is fairly straightforward. It's really simple. You know, we start with discovery and analysis. We try to get to know the community. From that, we build our vision and then the recommendations are how hopefully the City of Solon can kind of achieve that vision. Right now, we're wrapping up the plan as we speak and we're sort of on this implementation strategies section, which is where we try to give the city a little bit of a guide and maybe next steps to help them turn the plan into action. So it doesn't just become something that sits on a piece, a shelf, that it really turns into physical projects. And I'll kind of mention a few things that the city's already doing right now. Based on recommendations, we've given them, they're already sort of putting them into action. One of the things I want to focus on is just sort of how we adapted this plan for COVID. This project has pretty much happened all during COVID. We had an online survey that launched last January and February. And right as that survey closed and we were trying to get some, you know, additional public feedback, we had to go into COVID sort of circumstances. So our team did a really great job. We have sort of an all hands on deck approach. We hosted virtual town halls. We had live broadcasts on the City of Solon YouTube channel, where we would do a live call-in Q and A where we had a phone number broadcasted on the screen where people could call at any time and ask a question. We also created a series of boards or signs you could see there in the middle of the screen that we had scattered all throughout the community in advance of that meeting to give people information and try to get them to tune in. Following up from that meeting, we had an online survey and also sort of an online mapping tool where people could place dots all throughout the City of Solon. So trying to recreate, some of you already know, our kind of boards that we have at public meetings and dots and pins and all that kind of fun stuff. Figure out ways we can recreate that virtually through different tools and different methods. Kind of doing the same thing also with focus groups and stakeholders. We had various online surveys. We would record presentations and send them to focus groups so they could watch them at their leisure, knowing that everybody's schedules were kind of varied. And trying to get people to schedule and meet at one specific time via Zoom is really difficult when you're talking about a group of seniors or a group of students or a group of business representatives. What we did is we also hosted virtual office hours, which was again giving people six or seven different options to sign up to participate in a meeting so they could pick a daytime or an evening that worked best for their schedule. And then we also use other interactive online tools like it's called Mural, which is just basically same kind of thing, taking sort of those interactive boards that we have at a meeting and just making them virtual. And instead of having a physical dot in your hand, you sort of click and drag it with a mouse. And then last, we did another virtual town hall and this one was really great. Instead of hanging signs around the community, we created a mailer that went out to every single resident in the City of Solon in advance of the meeting, telling them where and when they could participate and watch. This one also included the live call-in, but with this one, we also did a live polling where people could sign in via their phone or text and answer questions live during the presentation during the meeting virtually. The city was even, you know, creative enough to put a QR code up on the screen so that way if people could, while the meeting was going on, sign up if they missed sort of the signup section of the presentation. With that, we also included another mapping exercise and another online survey. So really, all in, you know, in terms of community engagement, it was really great to see, you know, how many views we got on YouTube for these virtual broadcasts or how many survey responses we got or how many mapped points we got and hundreds of individual comments we received from people. All virtually and still, you know, getting engaged and being participants in the plan. I even spoke to the mayor two days ago and he mentioned that they had a job fair in person and how many people actually have come up to him and still brought up the Solon Connects Plan and how they're really excited to see some of the elements be implemented. So, you know, all of that kind of led us to our sort of plan and recommendations and visions. I won't really spend a lot of time on this. This is sort of how we set it up. But really, there's kind of four key elements of enhancing the network for existing users, expanding it, making it better to reach more people, educating the public on active transportation and what that means and what the benefits are, and then evaluating sort of new policies and procedures and sort of new technologies and things that are emerging in the long term to kind of support active transportation in Solon. One of the really kind of main goals of all these recommendations is really to better balance car needs with the need of other users like pedestrians and cyclists. We know roadway designs can generally be influenced by, you know, the efforts to move cars and reduce congestion and this can really negatively impact the pedestrian space. But we know the inverse to this is also true and slight, you know, reductions in car benefits can really impact the pedestrian space and make it better. So really, with the Solon Connects Plan, really what we're trying to do is measure the quality of the Solon streets, not based upon how quickly we can move traffic on them, but how much they create a safe, attractive, and fun and thriving network for everybody. And the need to balance users can really be further kind of explained when we think about the space along a street and how the different, you know, uses are defined. You know, streets serve essential functions and really should be designed to accommodate all their needs. And sort of constantly expanding the vehicular zone can really kind of impact that sort of pedestrian zone and the different elements and requirements, you know, that are in that space. You know, city-owned right-of-way is a valuable public space, so we want improvements that use that space wisely and allocate the proper amount of space for pedestrians, cyclists, transit units, business, outdoor cafes, who name it, ensuring that sort of all these streetscape elements work together to build a comfortable and safe environment. So with all of this, you know, in mind and what we wanted to do to achieve all this, you know, in addition to filling gaps in the city sidewalk network that we know that exists, what we have recommended is various facilities, including those sort of all-important, all-ages and, excuse me, all-ages and abilities facilities throughout the community. You know, and as we mentioned in the previous slide, the design of these facilities is however just as critical as their location. You know, we want to make sure that we're not just adding a sidewalk for a sidewalk's sake, you know, just because no one exists, but instead building, you know, and investing in connectivity and creating a facility that's safe and comfortable for everyone. You know, building these types of facilities, especially the ones on the right, is hopefully where we can start to change people in Solon and people in the region's perception on mobility and having infrastructure that supports converting those short one- and two-mile car trips into more fun walking and biking trips that can be safe for the entire family. Here's kind of just a sample of the recommendations and our recommended priority network. You know, that includes the location of almost 60 miles of new all-ages and abilities facilities throughout Solon, including sidewalks, side paths, bike boulevards, and off-street trails. This really, network really focuses on expanding safer access to jobs, transit, parks, schools, and other amenities in the community. And what we've really found is, you know, in many places, people are really ready to get out more. It's just unfortunately, our infrastructure is not ready for that. So that's what we're trying to do here with the Solon Connects Plan. And you can kind of see when you look at these two maps, how those recommendations really improve that access and convenience. Many more Solon residents and neighborhoods would now have direct access to those all-ages and abilities facilities within a five-minute walk from their home compared to what exists now. And then really, what we're trying to emphasize here is the Solon Connects Plan is more than just one project. It's really about a network and projects that provides access to destinations and access to different facilities. And one of the other key elements of this was kind of improving access. You know, being five minutes away from a new trail, Solon's got opportunities for a lot of trails with vacated rail corridors is great, but if you can't get on it anywhere, it's not really going to seem like an option and you might not consider using it because you can't get there. So, you know, Summit Hike Bike Trail is a good example. We can see all those little spines connecting to, or those neighborhood connections to the main spine. So really, what we're also emphasizing with the City of Solon in the plan is to work on building those connections to these facilities, whether it's through existing city-owned property or other new solutions and new partnerships with landowners, whether it's easements or other partnerships to create access so people feel like that new trail that's five minutes away is something they can actually use. And then sort of following up on kind of additional recommendations that go beyond just kind of the corridors and the different things. You know, we know most Solon residents don't use transit, but Solon's a job hub. It's one of the largest job hubs in the county. So we know that access to transit is really important and creating better transit access and better waiting environments is critical. So we know that many of the stops along the RTA route in Solon don't have sidewalks, which we've already addressed in a lot of our recommendations, but only as this map shows, only one of them has a shelter. So what we're trying to do is identify places to put new shelters in at high-traffic stops. And we've sort of recommended this a couple of months ago and the city is already working with RTA to implement stops at these two locations and potential new stops elsewhere. So it's really great to see the plan kind of immediately turning into action. In addition to that, we've also talked about, you know, safe routes to schools being an option. You know, Solon is always, we ranked as one of the top school districts in the county, in the state, you know, consistently, but they don't have a safe routes to school plan. And, you know, one of the ways to make a community safer and walking and biking for everybody is to really focus on kids. So we're really emphasizing them to look at that as an option. And then also, you know, we want to talk about updating zoning codes. Really, the idea here and kind of the follow-up is, you know, we don't want to spend significant energy on connectivity improvements only to have the land use patterns in Solon just be at odds with that. You know, we're working against the community's vision. You know, the idea is you can build the safest sidewalk or trail to any destination, but if your final 200 feet means you got to walk across a parking lot with no direct access, you know, you may not really choose to walk and bike there again. So really kind of focused on several updates to the city zoning code to support more walkable and accessible environments to really kind of bring all of these elements of the plan together. And one of the, you know, you can, places you can really see the need for updates like that is downtown Solon. Many of the trails and facilities we proposed connect directly to downtown, including sort of a main spine of the Norfolk Southern Rail to Trail project. And right now, downtown's got multiple zoning districts, each with their own kind of land use and design requirements like setbacks. So really, what we want to emphasize is how do all these districts support walkability? Where do the trailheads are located? You know, how do you get to different destinations safely and easily if you were to walk or bike downtown? And so really, following the Solon Connects Plan, we're really emphasizing them to sort of, in addition to zoning code updates, to develop a comprehensive downtown master plan that would help provide answers to some of these questions and really dive into how the mobility meets the land use and how those things work together to really create and emphasize active transportation and walking. So that's sort of the end. Thanks for taking the time to let me share our results so far and we're looking forward to finalizing the plan here over the next few weeks.
Thank you so much, Michael. Does anybody have any questions for Michael? Any hands raised or anything, but you know, I think this is a really great example.
I think Freddie had one.
Freddie's got it. Oh, go ahead, Freddie.
Thank you, thank you. A great job, Michael. Good to see you again. And just want to highlight a couple of things. And this is obviously becoming very pervasive throughout the county and the region with wanting to create more walkable communities. In the context of Solon, you had illustrated the downtown and you show various land uses and things of that nature. Now, I know that a lot of suburban communities have a lot of plaza-style developments because it's traditionally been about destination, people coming with cars and you got to see a parking. Have you guys had any discussions about thinking how those retail establishments that take up so much real estate can be reimagined to really start to support some of the walkability that you referenced in the presentation?
Yeah, we have. They have passed, part of their downtown is a mixed-use zoning district, so they've already started to rethink some of that, but it's really only a small piece of just a larger area. You know, we focused on them sort of first, just kind of getting their zoning code to be sort of more unified because you could be on one street and it's a setback 60 and then across the street it's 20. So, and then they have buildings that would be illegal under their zoning code right now. In terms of the actual physical changes beyond sort of the zoning updates, we've had some discussions with them about extending the street network and making it more of a grid pattern. A lot, a lot of times with those developments, you get like a big parking lot. To try to redevelop that with one parcel is difficult. So potentially adding new streets in and sort of creating a more, you know, denser network and slicing up the parcels into smaller pieces and chunks that can kind of be developed organically is one option. But yeah, one of the challenges with Solon is that area is so big. You know, they're downtown in comparison to sort of just like, for example, like the Van Aken District. You know, you could fit like three or four or five different Van Aken districts just in that one area. So it's kind of the, the thought being, you know, how can you take that model where that's, you know, and repeat that over and over again? And is there enough sort of demand to support that?
Yeah, yeah. I know a lot of, when you think about the Lifestyle Center, you know, notion, which is really creating that sort of urban environment from scratch, you know, and how that feeling of walkability and density, you know, reminds people what true urbanity is, you know, and I think there's a strong desire for that. But like with your parking lots, like they showed the plaza in the illustration that you had, have you guys thought about out-parcel development and trying to kind of build on those lots or create density on those lots?
Yeah, I mean, that's the goal is with the whole downtown is to, is to build that density and to use the sort of trails and access points is kind of to build around that. Because right now, if you did put in that Norfolk Southern Trail, you know, you'd get downtown and you'd be faced with, you know, low-density sprawling development and parking lots everywhere. So the idea is building off that with more density, with more walkability, you know, and where those out-parcels are. You know, we've, we've discussed potentially having development be more inward-facing, where the idea is it builds from that trail access point and those new street connections to create more of an inward-facing. And then sort of when you have the arterials around the outside, that's where you potentially put some of your other uses like parking lots and, or parking garages and things like that.
Then one last question for Mary and Michael, as well as the other Michael. With respect to the residents, right? Because this, this shift in, you know, the way people traditionally have lived in suburban communities where, you know, you had your single-family, you know, properties, setback, et cetera. How do you think residents are receiving this notion of creating more density in suburban, traditionally suburban areas?
I think it's kind of, yeah, I think it varies. I think you would, when you bring up the sort of lifestyle centers and the other examples of successful projects, people see those and, you know, I think they look at them positively. But, you know, how that sort of gets recreated in their community, I think, is really sort of, you know, the challenge. And I think, you know, developing downtown master plans or doing design charrettes sort of processes and things like that, I think would be really helpful in sort of really getting communities to come out and kind of visualize and see what potentially could happen there in terms of size and scale. I will say that during this process, and it'll be my last comment since you guys heard me talk enough, is that we heard a lot of people talk about how they don't walk or bike to a strip mall. Like, no one's going to do that, right? And so I think when you tie that into the elements you're talking about of new design features and styles, you know, I think you can really start to see people say, okay, yes, you know, I like that idea because you're right. I wouldn't walk or bike to what's currently there, but I would walk or bike to, you know, to that, to a Van Aken or some other district, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that covers it, I think. I think just again, not recreating another Cracker Park or another something that exists somewhere, but how could something like that fit into the fabric of the community and get people there safely by all modes of transportation? So I think that's a goal that, you know, we work on with our master plans and our zoning code updates to take a look at those as we're, we're working with the community, so. Well, thank you, Michael. Thank you. You know, I think one of my goals from, from the beginning of joining this team was to make sure that you're hearing from our team that's doing, you know, tremendous work in the community. So this is just another example of how we're trying to make sure that you know what work we're doing. So I'm going to get back and share my screen again, hopefully. Maybe? Okay, so yeah, sorry, I missed that in the, in the agenda, so I apologize for that. So we will get back now to the resolutions. So we've got two resolutions related to OPWC, both with DOTWIC and with NREC. And so Allison's going to give us a brief update on those two programs and agreements. And then we will move for, we'll go discussion on the resolutions and requests for a vote. So I will turn it back over to Allison.
Hello, thank you for hearing from me. I prepared a brief presentation. This is more of an overview or perhaps a reminder to many of the two programs that relate to the resolutions. There it is. So, and again, unscrambling that alphabet soup that is my job, the DOTWIC, the NREC, the OPWC. So these programs are run through the Ohio Public Works Commission and District One refers to Cuyahoga County. And these are the two grant programs that we administer here in the County Planning Commission. So the Ohio Public Works Commission was created initially in 1987 and for the Infrastructure Program. And this is all in statute in the Ohio Revised Code, Section 164. OPWC's mission is to deliver its statutory programs with the greatest efficiency and highest customer satisfaction while maintaining a high level of transparency and accountability to Ohio's taxpayers. So, and the liaison part is a big part of that. So the Ohio Public Works Commission has five programs. The State Capital Improvement Program is a combination of grants, loans, or loan assistance or credit enhancement for infrastructure projects. And I'll explain a little bit more in detail about that. The Local Transportation Improvement Program. The Small Government Program is an emergency program. And I have the slides. I have to remember not to get ahead of my slides, so that's why I'm not going into detail. And then finally, the Clean Ohio Conservation Green Space Program was added to Ohio Public Works Commission when that was first voted into existence around 2000. So the Ohio Public Works Commission divided the state up into 19 districts. This was based on population counts and per capita. Cuyahoga County is District One. We are a single-county district. So, and the allocations that we get are based on the per capita population of the census, the decennial census. So again, as I stated, the Cuyahoga County Planning Commission facilitates these grant programs. This is from actually last year's. Our funding cycles are about to be underway and we do all the advertising for that. So the two programs, the first resolution, which is 210610-A, is for the District One Public Works Integrating Committee that oversees the Infrastructure Program. So the State Capital Improvement Program is the Combined Grant Loan Program or the Credit Enhancement Program based on funding from general obligation bonds. So of the skip allocation, 10% of that is required by statute to be a loan. So as those loans are paid back, they go, come back to District One, and that is the revolving loan program. So as skip loans are repaid, those funds are set aside and redistributed to projects in the county. The Local Transportation Improvement Program is a grant program for roads and bridges based on funding provided from the gasoline taxes. What I didn't mention is the skip program also includes water main projects, sewer projects, stormwater projects, and wastewater treatment plants. So the Local Transportation Improvement Program is only for roads, bridges, and culverts. And the Small Government Commission is run through the Ohio Public Works Commission. However, the district will select from smaller villages and townships with populations in unincorporated areas of less than 5,000 in population. These are usually not competitive and so they get a second chance to compete for grant money statewide. It did not mention the Emergency Program. The Emergency Program is also run through the Ohio Public Works Commission. If somebody in District One were to call me, I would recommend them to, straight to OPWC. They now get $12 million for these emergency programs, which is great. It's up. But as of July 1st, it'll become available and by July 2nd, it will all be allocated. So if you have anything, send it right away. The Clean Ohio Green Space Conservation Program. So this was started in... The Clean Ohio Green Space Conservation Program. So this was started in two thousand. And this program helps to fund preservation of open spaces, sensitive ecological areas and stream corridors. And this is used more for land acquisition and passive recreation. The Clean Ohio Program has uh, another program. Uh, dedicated to trails and that is um, run through the Ohio Division of Natural Resources. So the way the three programs work together is um, Ohio Public Works Commission oversees. Both the Infrastructure Program and the Clean Ohio Conservation Program. And they approve. The methodologies that are made locally in the districts. Uh, they give the final approval of the recommended projects. And then they are the bank, they award all the funding. So moving down from there is the Infrastructure Program. And the District One Public Works Integrating Committee implements the Infrastructure Grant Programs. Uh, they develop the project selection and evaluation methodology. They select the projects and send them back to. Uh, OPWC for approval. And they also appoint the Natural Resources Assistance Council members. The natural, the Dopwic is made up of seven members, the Enrak is made up eleven of eleven members. The um, Dopwic again appoints them, the Enrak implements the Clean Ohio Conservation Program. They develop the project selection and evaluation methodology and select the projects recommended for OPWC funds. So uh, just to give you looking forward, what we have coming. Forward to us, we have almost thirty million dollars for infrastructure projects in fiscal year twenty twenty-three. That means these projects are selected this year and the funding becomes available starting July first, twenty twenty-two. Um, and then for the Clean Ohio Green Space Conservation Program, this money will become available in July of. Twenty twenty. Now I'm getting mixed up. I don't know why they're different, but I think that the money comes out before July of next year. So, but we have uh, three point five million dollars. Um, we were able to close out another project between the end of. Um, last year and we have a carryover balance of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, and this is good. Both of these programs are very competitive. So the liaison program, and this is what those resolution uh, uh, resolutions. Uh, covers. So the liaison undertakes the work and activities set forth in the scope of work defined in both of the administrative agreements. Uh, they attend any OPWC sponsored statewide leadership event as necessary to maintain a level of staff proficiency. Which includes this year and new electronic um, works wise program that is being rolled out. Uh, they provide the district and the OPWC with the transcription of the minutes, meeting notices, agendas, and any other necessary. Support services. Um, travel within the district as requested to assist local subdivisions and attend and conduct. Meetings as necessary. And finally, under the direction of the district. So either the um, Dopwic or the Enrak, um, develop project selection processes for approval. Um, and ensure that the recommended projects meet the requirements of law, rules and regulations of OPWC. And finally notify and assist all political subdivisions within the district of the opportunities to apply for. The financial assistance for both programs. So that's um, the Ohio Public Works Commission programs in a nutshell. Um, and then you have the detailed information of those uh, agreements in your packet.
Okay, it sounds like we were going to move. Go ahead, Mary.
No, no, go ahead. I was just, I asked if there's any questions. If not, we'll move over to the resolutions. And I'm trying to get Mayor Gemella in, so. I think we have a quorum without him, but I'm gonna email Tony.
Okay, so we're moving to the resolutions, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, so why don't we uh, move to resolution two one zero six one. Zero dash A, the OPD, OPWC Cost Agreement with Dopwic. Um, if uh, Allison, you're going to give us a quick. Um, overview of that uh, cost breakdown?
Yes, so that is um, sixty-five thousand dollars in total. And on page, uh, let's see, of your. Um, here it is. Nope, I don't know where it went. Um. So yeah, so fifty thousand dollars of that is for personnel. Um, that is not just me. Uh, we work with Dan for making maps and um, uh, and, and again. The, just the regular staff here getting stuff on the website. Um, five hundred for the operating expenses. Uh, ten thousand dollars for the project scoring and uh, four thousand dollars for the extra staff support. So anything above that gets um, donated, so.
Okay, is there um, first on the motion, uh, I'll, I'll make the motion. Is there a second to approve resolution? Number two one zero six one zero dash A?
Second, go ahead, Brown.
A, Simon.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, further discussion now? No discussion? Okay. All right, so on the motion, can I um, for all those that, that approve, say aye?
Aye.
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 Yeah, I have to abstain. I think I have to abstain, Mike, on the Dopwic board.
Since you both, uh, Mayor, both you and I are on that board, actually, Mayor. That's right. Um, I, is the Law Department on also? Can they?
Yes, Wesley's on.
Way in on this? Wesley, do you know if, if we need to abstain as two members? My, both myself and Mayor Sellers serve on the, on the Dopwic board. Do we need to abstain from voting on this?
Uh, to be candid, I don't know the answer directly, but um, it, it seems like that may be a good idea considering your positions on that board.
Okay, so tentatively, I think we have enough members here that can advance this um, with both the mayor.
Mister Chairman?
Yes, Mayor, go ahead.
Mayor Mike, I sit on the Enrak Clean Land Ohio Board as well.
Okay.
And still have a quorum.
We still have a quorum on those items, right? So if we had three people abstaining, we would still have enough votes to move this item uh, on the affirmative, correct?
If you separate the Enrak from the Dopwic, yes.
Okay, all right, so on this initial motion, which is the uh, uh, Resolution A. Um, uh, for those voting yes, can we do a, uh, what, maybe a roll call would be the best way, Annette?
Okay, uh, Mayor Boats?
Aye, sorry.
All right. Uh, Councilperson Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Director Collier?
Yes.
Uh, Director Dever?
I'll abstain on this.
Mayor De Seco?
Yes.
Mayor Gemella?
He may still be trying to get in.
Mayor Prosek?
Yes.
Mayor Sellers?
Abstain.
Councilperson Simon?
Councilperson Simon, you may be muted.
Oh, I said yes, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
You have a quorum with those votes, that it passes.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate that. Maybe we can look into that, Wesley, in the short term here to uh, just clarify that.
I, I'm, I'm already trying to look into it, yeah.
Okay, thanks. All right, on the next item, we have a second resolution, same number, B. OPWC Cost Agreement with Natural Resource Assistance Council. Is there anything further that needs to be uh, presented on that? No, can I have a motion to approve that item?
So moved.
Mayor moved.
Second, Simon.
Seconded by Mayor Simon. Motion by Mayor Prosek.
Did I get a?
Not correct. Sorry.
Yeah, interesting.
All right, do we have that right now?
Uh, um, I have Mayor Prosek first and Councilperson Simon second.
No, I, I did not make a motion because I have to abstain on this one.
That's right.
Okay, who?
I made the motion. Mayor De Seco.
I'm fourth. There we go. Would you like a roll call?
Please.
Mayor Boats?
Aye.
Councilperson Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Director Collier?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was on mute. Yes.
That's okay. Um, let's see where my, Director Dever?
Yes.
Where's the secow?
Yes.
Mayor Gemella? Make it on here. Uh, Mayor Prosek?
Abstain, please.
Mayor Sellers?
Yes.
And Councilperson Simon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, we have an additional resolution here. Mary, do you want to give an overview of that?
Yes, thank you, Director Dever. Uh, this is resolution number twenty-one oh six one zero dash C. Uh, so this is a modification of the County Planning's Personal Personnel Policies and Procedure Manual, Section nine point one zero. Uh, this was an effort to update our manual to make it more in line with the county's. Uh, handbook and county employee's handbook. So uh, that Personnel Policy Manual, ours was adopted on August fourteenth, twenty fourteen. And this modification of the section of the manual makes our policy more consistent with Section eleven point oh nine of the Cuyahoga County Employee Handbook. Which when I did these slides, based on the third revision adopted on February twentieth, uh, there has been a subsequent, two subsequent. Updates on the County Employee Handbook. Most recent um, update is from May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, language regarding this section of the policy stays the same. The language previously used in the County Planning's uh, Section nine point one zero was very outdated, is related to pronouns used. And only referencing pregnancy, uh, not adoption or legal placement. Uh, as the County Planning. Uh, Department strives to be an employer of choice, we thought this modernization of the language was needed. Uh, approval of this agreement allows County Planning to modify its existing maternity and eternity leave policy to a parental leave policy. And will reflect similar benefits and language as its sister provision in Section eleven point oh nine of the County Employee Handbook. If approved, this policy will be effective immediately.
I'm sorry, can you advance the slide to see?
Um, can you not see C? I'm sorry.
The A, you are C.
I'm seeing C, but apparently you're not seeing what I'm seeing. Let me see, hold on.
Now we have C.
Do you see C now?
Yes.
Got it now, yes.
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Any questions on this update? We've worked with legal to um, develop the resolution and make the changes to our policies and procedures. Uh, the updated language is, was in your packet and the existing county's Section eleven point oh nine was also included in your uh, packet.
Okay, I am going to make a motion to um, approve number, resolution number two one zero six one zero. Dash C, which is a modification of the Cuyahoga County Planning Commission's Personal Policy and Procedures Manual. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor Prosek?
Everybody jumped up.
Everybody at once.
Okay, Mayor Prosek, I think we're going to give you the second there. Um, is there any discussion on this motion, please? Hearing none? Uh, can we have a voice vote of A or yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
And he knows? That motion carries. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. And you'll, you'll continue to see some updates to modernize our policy and procedure manual. So we thought. Uh, it would be more prudent to do sections at a time and the most important sections as we prioritize those versus an entire. Update of the manual, so thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mary. Appreciate that. Well, now we're going to move into the next item, which is directly into you, is the Executive Director's report. So go ahead, Mary.
Thank you. Can you see my slide on the Executive Director's report?
Not yet.
We're still on C. It's following the wrong, I have too many screens open.
There you go.
Now? Okay. Okay, so we have a lot going on. Um, as you see from projects like Solon, there's a lot of uh, work that's being done. And a lot of very creative uh, minds at work. And how do we make sure we're getting public input on? The projects that we're doing without actually being in person. So I'm hap- happy to report, uh, one of my goals, you know, as I started this position. Was to really have more collaboration with the Department of Development. We continue to do that. We've had several conversations with them. Uh, about how we can better collaborate with them. We have, are in discussions with a uh, interagency agreement and developing a scope. Related to that as, uh, in terms of getting a, you know, structural update of the five-year economic development plan. We, we did just exist, uh, assist them with interviews with the Economic Development Commission and providing. An update to council on the five-year plan uh, that was just submitted by Department of Development. So we see a bigger role and uh, you know. Working with Department of Development and Baldwin Wallace and the work ahead for uh, an update to provide to council in twenty twenty-two. So more to come on that. Um, the regional data book, you know that we did publish our community's data book. Um, I can't remember now, it was at least a month ago, if not more. Um, a team is working really hard on creating that regional data book. We're estimating getting that published in July. Uh, we have a final draft done at this point. We're going to be socializing that. With uh, NOAACA, TMEO, a lot of different entities to make sure that we're looking at the right demographic or information. And again, this is looking at the Cleveland Metro area against uh, other similar metros and how we stack up. And so. Really great exercise, very proud of the team. Patrick's leading that effort. Uh, and I think it's really going to bode well, not only for the work that we do. But other agencies and making sure that, that information is readily available for people. Uh, so current staffing, uh, we have two interns full-time this summer, which is terrific. Uh, thinking forward to future needs and our workload and our capacity. Uh, still working with PRC and the uh, job, excuse me, job descriptions and classifications. So that we can have approved upon uh, job descriptions and pay grades that line up with the county's uh, pay grades. And so working through that with them, I believe that will, it's through the consultants right now, all planning services related. Positions and that will then go to council for approval on those. Uh, I envision posting this summer a senior planner position. And then an entry level planner position. And so looking for a September first start on those. Uh, again, looking at budget and see what we can manage within our existing budget and where there may be needs for additional funds. So more to come as we work through the summer on that. Uh, a remote, a return to work and remote work policy, that's another policy that will come back to you. Uh, I know we had a tentative meeting in July and depending on schedules, I, I would like to get a few more resolutions through in July, but if it's not possible, we'll look to do that in August. Uh, the staff currently is uh, required to be reporting to the office once a week. I'm happy to report, a lot of our, our team here is reporting much more than that. And it's been really great to have everybody back, um, you know, here and there and having larger groups together, following obviously the safety protocols here. But really wanted to give the, the team a chance to make uh, plans for, you know, childcare and other things that are limited this summer. Uh, and working through the team, working through that with the team and um, making sure that we're still maintaining. You know, the work that we have to do. Uh, the good news is they've, they really turned on a dime last year to do everything virtual. And a lot of the meetings that we're still holding are obviously virtual. And so, um, you know, we're working through that as well. So. Uh, the remote work policy, we do not currently have anything in our policies and procedures manual related to that. So I've been working with law. Uh, to try and come up with. I've been working with law to try and come up with a plan that works for our team and then incorporate that into just our existing, you know, we report to this headquarters, but there, there is flexibility to work from home and work remotely, as agreed upon upon their managers, and working through that with the team. So more to come on that. Previously, last month, I sent all of you an email talking about our strategy for 2021. As you know, we typically open our planning grants about this time, and I really felt it was important to take a step back and look at the work that we have and do the best that we can on completing that work and then doing additional work that would benefit not only, you know, one community that has awarded a planning grant, but something that can be applied across the county. So our goal for 2022 is to provide a wider array of potential planning projects that are in line with a regional strategy with a focus on equitable distribution. So again, we don't want to have communities who don't have the wherewithal to apply for funding to not benefit from our services. So really looking to restructure the planning grants going into 2022. And so some of you I've had conversations with was, what does that mean and what work do you have currently? And so I wanted to provide you just a little insight onto the projects that we're currently working on. As you see here, we've got a large list of projects that are currently underway. Some of these were, you know, delayed due to COVID, and some of them are nearing completion.
Mary, we're not.
Yes. Sorry. Oh, I don't know what is going on. Can you see it now? Nope, hold on.
There it is.
You don't have a full screen view, Mary. You're.
I know. I think I have something wrong. I can see a full screen on my laptop, but then it's different on the other one. So let me see if I can. I'm not sure. I should've had done this with you, Kevin. Let me see.
It's all right.
There? No, still not. Okay. Too many screens open. Apologize for that. Okay, so what we're, you know, looking at here, a long, a large list of projects and the percentage complete of those and our targeted end date for these projects. And so we want to make sure that we're fulfilling, you know, our obligations with these projects before taking on, on new ones. And so, as I mentioned, our work with Department of Development, not only on a five-year economic development plan update, but also working with them and assisting them on the community investment target area strategies. So they're looking at, you know, neighborhoods and places that they can target some investment, and what we're finding is that there's a variety of local master plans and strategic plans going on, and how do they align with each other and how do they align towards a vision for, you know, everyone to be rowing in the same direction. So looking forward to having additional conversations with them on that and potentially assisting with that. I think somewhat, you know, with earlier discussion about retail, you know, county planning commission previously did retail studies, parking studies, there's a lot of those things that communities every day, all of them need assistance on. And so really looking to how we as an agency can provide best practices guides so that they can be used by multiple communities versus, again, just the ones that get the planning grants. So a lot of this, too, we're trying to move forward, things that have, were recommended in the Vibrant Neo program document, so thinking about transitory and design, you know, how do we help the communities and especially the inner-ring suburbs and our work with the First Suburbs Consortium on single-family zoning update, taking that information and making it applicable and beneficial to a lot of our communities within Cuyahoga County. So I can pause there and see if there's anything, you know, you would like to have any questions on that or if there's any concerns about, you know, that strategy going forward.
Any questions?
Mary, we, we had talked about, and, and maybe my recollection isn't absolutely clear, and I know you, you did talk with Jennifer, and that is, I thought that the county provided additional funds to the planning commission specifically for master plans. I know the answer back was, well, it was just for planning services around the county. Were you ever able to confirm that with the county and county council?
Yeah, so what we, I learned from Jennifer, we went back and looked at, you know, agreements and things that were in place. We haven't actually had an agreement in place for that since 2017. So we don't have an obligation financially or contractually to do that at this point, but, you know, obviously we're continuing to do planning work and, you know, things that are gonna be working with Department of Development and the communities within, within the county, so.
Were the minutes reviewed for how that was presented?
Oh.
To the planning commission? And maybe there are county council members on, so I'll, I'll let them speak to the, the issue. And maybe it was just my understanding that it was for master plans, but maybe there was a broader, that it, those dollars were for planning services. I don't have any problem. I, I really support what you're doing and appreciate seeing the whole array of projects. I mean, there's some depth and breadth there in terms of planning services, and nice to see, you know, how far we've come, when the end dates are. I just want to make sure that there wasn't a commitment to the county to provide those master plan services, that the intent of the dollars were specifically for that. And I understand Jennifer's, Jennifer checked that, but, and maybe Councilwoman Simon or Councilwoman Brown has a thought? Sure, I do have a thought. Thank you. Can you hear me? Want to make sure I'm not on mute. So originally, these dollars historically were earmarked specifically when the, when we first provided this subsidy was specifically for the master plans because there was such deficiency, you know, eight years ago when we came into office, basically, and saw that the communities really were struggling with not having master plans updated. So it originally was the intent, but as time went by, the most recent budget process, it was not specifically for those plans. You know, we thought some of the money would be used for that, but it did not have to all go toward that, just because of the shift and focus even from the planning commission, looking at zoning implementations now, second phase of what communities are asking for. So that's pretty much the evolution of it. So there's some flexibility at this point, as I understand. That's great.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I would, I would just have to, it's one of those things where I didn't want to go into this year, opening up for planning grants and really disappoint, you know, everyone who applied to say, oh, we can only do one or two or three, you know, because master plans are, you know, significant time investment, you know, from the team. And as you can see on here, there's a lot in, in those phases right now. And so I didn't want to overcommit and fall short. And so that, that's, you know, my, that's why I'm approaching it this way at this point.
Great. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have an obligation or responsibility to the county. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Director, too, Mary, for, you know, reaching out to make sure this was an appropriate way to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, just to follow up on that also, I think it may behoove us to have that conversation with OBM, because I know that there is a subsidy that does come, or actually a set of funding that does come over from the county to the planning commission as support, and maybe there's maybe an area where it can be further clarified on those potential uses.
Okay, that's a very good point. We will do that. Okay, any further questions on, on this? Thank you. Okay, can you see my next slide?
Not yet.
Maybe. Gosh. I could think you'd have this figured out by now.
We're seeing the agenda, the initial agenda, and now I know we have an amended agenda.
This is crazy. See it now?
Not yet.
Kevin, I should just have you run. I, yeah, I've been having a lot of problems with Zoom, and so.
Mary, it looks like we might be seeing one of your windows or your entire screen inside an individual window. So if you just drag that PowerPoint over your window, over your other screen, maybe.
Now?
No. I will, I can, I can bring it up.
Can you? We're both in the building. Kevin's just not with me. I just don't know why it's not going down.
All right, I can share my screen just a moment.
Sorry about that.
Does Mary have to stop sharing? Oh, he can bring it up.
Yeah. Oh, my goodness.
All right, is that better?
That is the agenda.
That's the agenda. I'm sorry about that, everyone. Okay, here we go. All right, sorry about that. All right, so kudos corners. I want to congratulate our intern, Laura Mendez Ortiz. I don't know if she's on today. Laura's with us for her, I guess we extended her spring internship through the summer, and she recently passed her AICP candidate exam. And so the candidate pilot program allows students without the professional planning experience to sit for the exam first before gaining the experience necessary to become a certified AICP. So we just want to congratulate her for that. So congratulations to Laura. And then we also have a new intern with us this summer, Emily, I'm gonna say it wrong, Pietra Tone. Sorry, Emily. Emily is also, she is a student from University of Cincinnati, and she is here with us for the summer, and I apologize for, I phonetically had it ready to go, but I think I've messed that up, so sorry, Emily. But Emily will be with us this summer, and she's been, you know, jumped right into projects and assisting, and so we're, we're happy to have her as well. So thank you. Okay, so just to provide a couple fiscal updates, our 2021 approved budget was 3.3 million 669,496. Actual, we are at 998,980, which is about 27% of our year-to-date total. Budget remaining for 2021 is $2.6 million, and our deposits to date are $96,887.19. With the invoices that we have out currently, we're, we are anticipating $133,372.60 in total Q1 revenues. So again, that goes back to our point of, we are generating revenues, you know, additional to the general fund subsidy that we're receiving, and so continue to work on that, but again, you know, give of our time to the communities that need it the most. And so just want to give you an update on the financial. Any questions on that?
No questions. Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mary.
All right, Kevin, can you advance on? Okay, new business. I sent you some information just before this meeting. My apologies for doing that. We don't like to have walk-on agenda items, but as most of you know, the Juneteenth holiday was recently approved as a paid holiday for all executive agency of Cuyahoga County under ordinance number 02021-0005. Majority of the non-executive agencies also adopted this holiday, and the holiday will be observed next Friday, June 18. Kevin, I don't know what happened, but. So we worked with law, we talked to our chair and tried to figure out how could county planning also adopt this holiday as a paid holiday, understanding that it's not currently listed in our policies and procedures manual as a holiday, and, and the fact that the holiday is being observed next Friday. And so we're putting before you Resolution Number 210610-D, which is a modification of Section 6.08 of our Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual, adding Juneteenth as a paid holiday. We are requesting approval of the amended list of holidays and observance of the holiday on June 18, 2021. So earlier today, I did send out this resolution language as well as a modification to Section 608 of our manual, and the only addition in that revised language is adding Juneteenth as a paid holiday. Any questions, discussion?
Okay, thanks, Mary. I appreciate that. First off, I, the law department, I think this is the first time I've been involved where we've had an item actually brought onto the agenda, a walk-on item, and I, just procedurally, are we allowed to do this? Is there any objections or concerns? And maybe I'd like to hear from the law department on that before we advance further discussion.
Yes, hi, Director. In my preparation of this resolution, I took an opportunity to look at the bylaws, and under Section 7 of our bylaws, the, there is a provision that allows a member to bring up a matter at or prior to a regular meeting, and so I feel comfortable with this resolution being brought at this time.
Okay, thanks, and so.
And I apologize, it's under Section 7 of the bylaws.
7.04A. Sorry, that was in my comments, and I forgot to mention that.
Can it be voted on? It can be, it can be brought up. Can it be voted on? When it is publicly posted?
It was not, it was not part of the agenda, Mayor, if that's what you're asking, but I do believe it can be voted on. A matter can include a resolution or ordinance, so I think a matter is broad enough, in my opinion.
Okay, I appreciate that, since I did have discussions with the executive director on this, and, and I recommended that as the sponsor, as a member of the planning commission, that we bring this item forward for the agenda. So hopefully, not the spirits of, of our bylaws. So with that also, is there additional questions or comments?
On the video, Cleveland.
I'm sorry, is that Director Collier?
No, no questions. That was some background. Forgive me.
Okay, appreciate that. Thanks for. Okay, is there anything? Well, if there is, I, the county obviously went through a pretty lengthy discussion on this matter over the last month to six weeks, I believe it was. The, the planning commission is, is housed here in the county headquarters building. The county, all the offices within the county will be participating, with the exception of the county planning commission. It tended to make sense that this, that they should be brought in and included in this, in this change. So with that, I'm gonna make a, a motion to.
Mr. Chair, it's Councilwoman Simon, thank you. I just want to say that county is doing events or, you know, sponsoring events throughout that day, as well as giving information about the significance of this day online, and I hope everybody can take a look at that. There's a video that my colleague on both planning and council, Chantel Brown, will be, I think, presenting on the video. So it's a lot of fun times, but it's also learning about why this day is significant, and just encourage people to take a look at what the county's doing and put a lot of energy behind this. And thanks a lot, Mary, for bringing us to the planning commission, so you can participate.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other further comment or discussion? Okay, with that, I'm gonna make a motion to approve Resolution 210610-D. Is there a second out there?
Second, Mayor Sellers.
Thank you, Mayor. Any further comments or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those against? Okay, that motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for walking through that very first walk-on item I've been participating in.
Yes. Thank you. We will avoid those in the future. I thank you.
Okay, is there any comments from the public? I'm not sure, Vannett, if we had any, any submittals?
I did not see any.
Okay, does anyone have any other comments or, that they'd like to bring up? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second, Brown.
Thank you, Councilwoman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, thank you, everyone. Really appreciate it. This concludes our meeting today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, everyone.
Bye-bye.